I'd like to bring the meeting to order. Our first order of business would be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. How about that? All right, well, we'll get started here. Our first order of business are reports from commissioners and staff. Do any commissioners have a report?
Nope.
Seeing none, staff?
Good evening. Just want to let you know there will be no meeting on June 20th for this month.
Okay. Thank you. So our next item would be the report from the Board of Supervisors Planning Committee Representative.
We did not have a meeting.
Okay. The Agricultural Advisory Committee Representative?
No meeting.
Meeting minutes of April 18th. If everyone's had a chance to look at them, I take it. I didn't see anything, but has anybody wished to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, back to my agenda here.
Public comment.
So we'll move on to public comment. There's 15 minutes allotted every evening for you to, anyone in the public, if you wish to come up to the podium and speak about anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you have a concern of something else, not anything we're going to speak this evening, this is your time.
Three minutes.
Nobody's rushing up, so I guess we don't have any this evening. Okay. Then we'll get on with the public hearing items. First item is KEIF. It's a zone change to change the zoning on a 5.6 acre portion of a 27.9 acre parcel. Staff?
Good evening. My name is Renee Hendry. I'm the project planner. We have an application from Tyler KEIF for zone change RZ 18-003. This application was submitted on May 10th, 2018, to the Tuolumne County Community Resources Agency for review. Here are the vision, mission, and value statements adopted by Tuolumne County, which are utilized as a guide for the processing of each project application we receive. One value is to encourage innovative and creative approaches to problem solving. The purpose of this zone change is to conserve a minimum of 20% of a project site for cumulative impacts to wildlife pursuant to the Tuolumne County Wildlife Handbook. The zone change is a condition to facilitate tentative parcel map T 17-041, which proposes to divide the 27.9 acre parcel into two parcels of 5.6 acres and 27.9 acres. Only the zone change is being considered at this hearing tonight. The tentative parcel map was heard by the Tuolumne County Surveyor's Office on May 10th, The project site is located at 11411 State Highway 49, southwest of the intersection of State Highway 49 and Parrot's Ferry Road. It is approximately a half mile to the north of the city of Sonora. The Union Hill Inn is located to the north of the project site. This site contains the Homestead Residential and Rural Residential General Plan. This HR is the dark tan color and the rural residential is the dark brown color. Both of these land use designations allow residences and agricultural uses. Tuolumne County Wildlife Map shows common habitats on the project site. The project applicant has proposed that the oak habitat in the southeastern portion of the site be placed into the open space zoning district. This is the proposed open space as shown on the map. It is a gray color. This area is approximately 5.6 acres or 20% of the site. An existing driveway borders the open space, which will be used to access a new home site in the future following the land division. The project is proposing to meet the mission of Tuolumne County by increasing the number of parcels available for new residences, so more people can enjoy a rural lifestyle in a healthy and safe community. The ability to construct more new residences would also aid in the creation of employment opportunities for people in the construction industry. The proposed open space zoning would protect the habitat values on the site while still allowing development of the site. The Planning Commission needs to make findings for the proposed zone change to ensure it is consistent with the general plan, ordinance code, and is also suited to the permitted uses under the proposed zoning district. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. The Board of Supervisors will make the final decision regarding the zone change. The Planning Commission can recommend approval of the project, add full measures to the project, recommend denial of the project, or even send the project back to staff to work on any outstanding issues. Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Not at this time.
No, none at this time. Well, with that, we will then open up the public hearing. Those, we're going to do this in a certain order. Those that wish to speak in favor will be, speak first, followed by those who wish to speak in opposition, followed by those who are neutral. Should there be anyone who wishes to rebut something that they heard earlier, they'll have that opportunity and then sir rebuttal for the opposite opinion. So with that, we'll start with those in favor. If there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the project, please come forward.
Peter, are we doing a three minutes tonight?
Not on this one. We don't even have anybody coming forward. So is there anyone opposed? Anyone neutral? Okay. Bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I will move on approval of the proposed zone change based on findings A, B, C, and D.
And I will second.
We have first by Mr. Plant and second by Mr. Baker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously.
It probably would be too much to ask for the public to use that as an example for the rest of the committee.
Well, you can always try.
Too much.
Yeah, in your dreams.
Commissioner, excuse me, Quincy Yaley, Assistant Director, CRA. The applicant for the next project has not arrived yet, and so I'd ask if you'd consider taking the next item out of, out of order and proceeding with number three, and then going back to two, hopefully she will arrive.
Quincy, Barbara's here.
Was she back in the back? I didn't see her. Okay, thanks, never mind, we're good to go.
All right. Then we'll carry on with item two. Well, I think we're doing, we're doing two first, right? Okay, aye.
No, we're doing two second.
Stutman is two.
There was a first.
You're going to get me confused, and you're trying real hard, I know.
You're easy.
All right, anyway.
Okay.
The Stutman project, so I will ask staff to provide us a staff report.
Good evening. Good evening, once again, I'm Renee Hendry, the project planner. We have conditional use permit CUP 15-003, which was received by the Community Resources Agency on April 10th, 2015. Also, general plan amendment GPA 17-001 and zone change RZ 17-004. Both of those were received on April 3rd, 2017. The applicants are Barbara and Donald Stutman. Here once again are the vision, mission, and value statements that Tuolumne County uses for every project that we receive. One value is to encourage innovative and creative approaches to problem solving. Conditional use permit CUP 15-003 is being considered to allow up to 15 weddings or events on the site for up to 300 persons at each event. Also, the conversion of historic structures to support the weddings and events, and the construction of a new 4,500 square foot reception hall to help reduce the sound associated with amplified music on the site. The project also proposes to amend the general plan and land use designation and change the zoning of a 0.11 acre portion of a parcel to facilitate a lot line adjustment, which is T 17-002, between the Stutman property and a neighbor to the northwest. Lot line adjustment T 17-002 is not being considered at this hearing tonight and will be heard at a later time by the county surveyor. The project site is located at 21645 Parrot's Ferry Road on the northeast side of the intersection of State Highway 49 and Parrot's Ferry Road. The site is within Supervisor District 5. The existing general plan land use designations are mixed use airport overlay and a state residential airport overlay. The area with the gray color on the map contains the mixed use general plan land use designation. The area with the tan color is the estate residential land use designation. The proposed general plan amendment is in association with the lot line adjustment, and it will be in the yellow triangle you see to the upper left, next to the outline of the project site. That yellow area is going to be the parcel that's involved with the Stutman property for the lot line adjustment. Here is the lot line adjustment, which is shown, being done on the Stutman property that's going to be added to the parcel that's directly to the west. This requires a general plan amendment and a zone change to be consistent with the general plan and zoning of the property to the west, which is going to be receiving the additional acreage. Here is an aerial view of the property. The Union Hill Inn was destroyed in a fire on April 29th, 2015. The inn is in the process of reconstruction. The weddings and events have continued utilizing other structures on the site. Access to the site is currently being provided by a driveway to the south prior to the so-called swing lane intersection. A new driveway will be constructed following a proposed realignment of Parrot's Ferry Road by the county within the next two years. The Y intersection will be a change, changed to a T intersection, which would slow down the traffic passing the project site and allow safe entrance to the new driveway. Here is the proposed realignment of Parrot's Ferry Road by the Roads Division of Tuolumne County. State Highway 49 is located to the left side of the slide. The current swing lane or Y intersection would be changed to the T intersection. Parrot's Ferry Road will be widened. The new driveway to the project site will be aligned with Union Hill Road intersection. State law requires that Native American tribes be notified of any proposed changes to the Tuolumne County general plan. Three tribes have historically resided in the area of the project site and were sent an invitation to provide comments. To date, no comments on the project have been received. The project was subject to the California Environmental Quality Act and a mitigated negative declaration was prepared. The initial study identified potential environmental impacts. However, the project's potential impacts were mitigated to less than significant levels by incorporating the mitigation measures identified in the initial study into the conditions of approval for conditional use permit CUP 15-003. Some of the topics that were addressed include hydrology and water quality, land use and planning, traffic and circulation, visual quality, and cultural resources. A study was required along with mitigation measures to protect potential resources on the site. The purpose of a conditional use permit is to ensure that certain types of proposed developments are properly integrated into the community based on certain criteria, such as is the project consistent with the existing zoning and general plan? Will the project overburden municipal services? Is the size and terrain of the project site suitable for the proposed use? And will the use be detrimental to persons residing or working in the surrounding area? Here are the findings used to determine if a proposed amendment to the general plan land use designation of the project site is consistent with the Tuolumne County general plan ordinance code and proposed future uses on the site. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. The Board of Supervisors will hear the project and make the final decision regarding the general plan amendment. Here are the findings for the proposed zone change to determine if the zone change is consistent with the general plan, ordinance code, and suited to the uses permitted for the proposed zoning district. The Board of Supervisors will hear the project and make the final decision, while the Planning Commission will be the recommending body. The Planning Commission needs to make findings for conditional use permit CUP 15-003 to ensure it is consistent with the general plan, ordinance code, and suited to the permitted uses under the proposed zoning district. The uses must also not be substantially detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. The Planning Commission makes the final decision regarding the conditional use permit. The project will allow the property owners to hold weddings and other events on the site, which would promote economic prosperity for the property owners and introduce more tourists to other features of Tuolumne County. The proposed use would not impact the integrity of the community's health and safety. The Planning Commission may recommend approval of the general plan amendment and approval of the zone change, or recommend approval with modifications, or even recommend denial of the general plan and zone change. The Planning Commission will make the final decision regarding the conditional use permit. Any questions?
Thank you. As with the last one, we'll do this in the same order, so there'll be in favor, opposed, neutral. If anyone wishes to rebut something they heard earlier, they can rebut it, and then there's an opportunity to sir rebut that, should it be necessary. Can I get a show of hands of how many people would like to speak? Okay, there's not too many, then we won't, we won't limit the time at least initially, but if you could keep it generally within the three to five minute range, we would appreciate it. So we'll start with those in favor.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Glenn Caldwell. I'm here representing Tuolumne County Business Council. Tuolumne County Business Council is a group of business leaders, and we, we educate one another, we stay in touch on state issues and local issues. And our study on this project, we recommend that you approve both the zoning change and the site development permit. We think this is an excellent project. We're glad to see that the Parrot's Ferry area in there is going to be improved, including Stone Mill, that will be happening. And you know, we're kind of thinking that when an entrepreneur takes a piece of property and converts a pigpen in a chicken coop to something useful, we think that's a good idea. Now, I know there's a few farmers would disagree with that, but we think that's going in the right direction. Dave and his team has done an excellent job. There's a hundred and some conditions on this property. I don't think they've left any stone unturned. As a matter of fact, we've considered the noise of frogs on this project. So it's been a very thorough study, and we recommend that you approve the project. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Caldwell? Thank you. Next, anyone else who's in favor, please? Anybody else? That's it? Okay, then we'll go on to those opposed. Please come up. You're not required to state your name, but you may if you wish.
My name is Linda Fox. As far as item number one, we have a seasonal wetland on our property, which is adjacent to the Stutman's. It used to be visited by turkeys, quail, wild geese, and ducks. We still have the ducks visit us, but we have not seen a turkey in the meadow nor any quail since the road was put in last year. So it has impacted the wildlife. Am I to understand that we're not going to talk about item number three tonight?
Which is the zone change? Is that what you're referring to?
The residential two acre down to one acre. Are we, are we addressing that tonight?
Certainly, we can take public comment on that. The point in the presentation was only that the Planning Commission is a recommending body on that, and so there'll be, there won't be a final decision on that item. It will go further on to the Board of Supervisors for a final decision.
So we will consider that. We will take a vote on it, but that one ultimately is decided by the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Well, I'm against taking the two acres down to one acre. That's higher density housing means more traffic on that gravel road, and I am understanding that the Stutman's are not going to pave that road. And when you take into consideration that you're going to put five homes at the end of a cul-de-sac, most people have two cars unless they have teenagers, and then they're going to have three cars or four cars. So we're looking at 15 to 20 cars going up and down that gravel driveway every day, and I'm not looking forward to the dust and the noise. We've already asked the Stutman's, my neighbors, Bill and Brenda, to alleviate the partying that had been going on at the end of the cul-de-sac, and they did do that. They put a log across the road. I'm also concerned is, is there going to be a mandatory disclosure to future landowners that the quality of their lives will be diminished by the party venues? And going on now down to item number four, which is to allow 50 annual weddings a year. There's only 52 Saturdays in a year, and you're asking me to give up 50 of them? There's no noise control. What kind of security measures are to be in place to handle 300 people, especially if they're going to be imbibing in alcohol? And what are the hours of the loud music, and just how loud are they allowed to be? I mean, we've listened to it go on 11, 12, 1 o'clock in the morning, and even if the music stops, the partygoers are still outside, and we can hear everything. In the summertime, my four-year-old granddaughter spends several weekends with us, and she can't sleep. We can't sleep. We moved in, it was nice and peaceful, and now all of a sudden, you know, we haven't had hardly a quiet day. And I'm really concerned about the security issue. How are you going to control all that? And I'm really concerned about the amount of weekends that you're asking me and my partner and the neighbors, all of us. Why do we have, you know, I appreciate the fact that the Stutman's want to better their lives economically, but they also have to take into consideration the people who live near them. You know, I took measures, okay, I can't say anything else. I'm just disappointed that this could happen. Thank you.
Any questions for the person? No? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Is there anyone that would like to speak neutrally? Okay. Any, does, do you want to rebut? Rebuttal?
Just a quick rebuttal on a few items. The previous speaker and the objections, I think most of those have been dealt in the medication, in all the medication. The hours, the noise levels are very specific and very clear in the, in the document here and the restrictions. And as to 50 a year, any of you who have ever been in business, can you consider that you're going to have a business and you're only going to get to open 50 days a year? It is a kind of a special business, but I don't think 50 is unreasonable, especially for this type of a business, and it's not going to be every Saturday. There's, of course, going to be some condensed timeframes, of course, wedding season, June, these kinds of things, but I think, I think 50 is very reasonable, and it's already been in the documents.
We have been living there for about years.
Sir, sir.
Out of order.
If you had your opportunity to speak, you chose not to. There's an opportunity for sir rebuttal from the woman who spoke earlier, if you'd like to rebut something that was just stated by the person before you.
I distracted you.
So I take it you're not, you're not coming forward? Okay. Well, all right, then in that case, we'll close the pub.
We'll go forward.
Sir, you didn't speak. You're not eligible for sir rebuttal. You did not speak.
I'm not, I was asking.
No, I was asking her. The woman who spoke has the opportunity, should she choose to. She, she's not moving. Okay. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Anybody have any questions for staff?
Yeah, Peter, I have a question. She discussed the driveway, the newer driveway, which at some point will be developed, is that, I believe that she was talking about. The current one?
There was a recent land division several years ago that's been in the process of working towards a final map, and there was a new road that was constructed off of Sawmill Flat Road that drives, let's see, to the south?
Okay.
And accesses several parcels that were created through a land division process. So that will not be an entryway or used through the use permit process, through the use permit.
Thank you.
So that's a pre-existing approval that occurred before this?
That's true.
It's not really part of this discussion?
It's not a part of this project.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to commend the staff for their work on this project. It is heavy.
Literally.
Lots and lots of work.
Thank you.
And I do think they've done a sterling job on mitigating. Thank you.
Chair?
Yeah, we come up with the issue on noise.
You might want to turn your mic on.
Nobody's ever complained they couldn't hear me before. We, we come up with this, the issues on noise regularly in these programs, and I think, you know, the specifications are quite restrictive in terms of how much noise you can have at the property line with the 50 and the 45.
And for how long?
I guess this is a question for code compliance. How much, you know, in retrospect, after we approve one of these things, how often does somebody come back and say, okay, we're, you're violating that noise requirement that we've, how much, how often has that not worked?
To my knowledge, we, on existing permitted uses such as this, there's one off of North Tuolumne Road. There's several other that I can think of, but we don't have noise complaints that come to the county. If we ever do, then we would obviously investigate it, and there would be a potential that the applicant would be in violation of their permit, and the county would pull their permit, and they would no longer be able to operate that business.
And I guess something for the general public to understand is that our code compliance is complaint-driven. So if there is no complaints, there's, it's kind of no harm, no foul if there's no complaints. So if there's no complaints, nothing's going to happen. So if you have an issue, you have the ability to deal with it.
And.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
And it's very clear in one of, condition number 16, that the amplified music would stop at 10:00 PM Monday through Friday, and 11:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays. So there is clearly a catch there that would catch them if they went past that, and I don't imagine they would because it's too easy to complain. And I encourage if they, they go to 10:05, give them a call, or give the county a call. And then the other part of it is, is in the noise report, probably gets a little esoteric, but they point out that when they were doing their noise testing, one night when it was, they were running a party, it looks like, they found that where they set up at the edge of the property, the dominating noise was the cars along the road and the frogs in the pond. So at that point, assuming that the conditions under test were done properly, I don't think that's going to be a problem, unless you don't like frogs.
Go ahead, Ted.
Yeah, I note that public sewer and public water are required very good. There were some negative comments from the public regarding the fact they weren't going to be on public water, public sewer, but indeed, they are required to do so, and I think that, that really goes a long way to make this a really positive project.
Anybody else?
Well, I have a question. Are you going to handle this, Mr. Chairman, as one for all four, or are you going to do it?
I think we need to do it separately, just because of the fact that some of them are advisory and some of them are.
Well, does this, if any one of these do not pass, does the whole thing drop?
The use permit is, is here tonight with the general plan amendment and the zone change, but truly are not necessarily interrelated. As Renee stated, the general plan amendment and the zone change are to facilitate a lot line adjustment for about .11 acres, and then the use permit is not dependent on that lot line adjustment. And so if you recommend, if you approve the use permit tonight, and for some reason the general plan amendment and zone change are not approved, it does not nullify the use permit approval.
Thank you.
Because it's not really going to affect.
That's correct. A use permit would go under the regular appeal process, which is outlined in our ordinance code, if someone chose to appeal the use permit.
Well, under that event, then I guess we could do it all at once, couldn't we?
Yeah, that's, that's where I was going with this.
Well, if you'd like to try to make a motion to that effect, then. Well, if you'd like to try to make a motion to that effect, then.
Very lengthy.
Oh, great. Me and my big mouth. All right, I'd make a, well, is the fellow board folks agreed with that, or do you want to do it individually?
It doesn't really make any difference.
All right, well, then let's.
The motion.
I think per that explanation, it convinces me it doesn't.
I'd make a motion that we approve the negative, the mitigated negative declaration items A through F, the amendment to the general plan GPA 17-001 ABC, the zone change RZ 17-004 based on A, B, and C, and the conditional use permit 15-003, items, and catch this, 1 through 102.
I'll second.
Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Good job.
Okay. Second here to get organized. All right, so item number three, which, let's see, wrong, mid-valley Aviation Incorporated. Looking over here, is this one yours, Quincy?
It sure is.
Staff report, please.
Good evening. My name is Quincy Yaley, Assistant Director of Development at the Community Resources Agency. The project before you tonight is general plan amendment 17-001 to amend the general plan land use designation from RR to LDR, Low Density Residential, Zone Change RZ 17-009 to rezone the project site from AE 37 AIR to RE 1 MX AIR, which is residential estate, one acre minimum, mobile home exclusion combining and airport combining, tentative subdivision map TSM 002 to split a 21.6 acre lot into nine lots, as well as mitigated NACDAC for those tentative subdivision map, zone change, and general plan amendment. Here you have the vision, mission, and values of Tuolumne County, which we always use when we are processing an application over at CRA. As Renee mentioned, we use these, use these values to find innovative ways to solve problems. I have gone over the project description, and for your action tonight, you are the recommending body on the subdivision map, the zone change, and the general plan amendment, and the mitigated NACDAC tonight. Here's a map of the project site. It's located just south of the Pine Mountain Lake Airport and north of Ferretti Road in Groveland. It is Sessors Parcel Number 66160-065. This is a map of the proposed subdivision. You can see they're creating nine lots. Several of those lots will border the airport property as well as Ferretti Road. This is a map of the general plan land use designations in the vicinity of the project site. You can see the semi-rectangular piece that is the project site just south of the airport, north of Ferretti Road. And the remaining properties around the airport are designated Low Density Residential, which is what this project is requesting, with the exception of some general commercial that's just to the west of the project site.
So it's just below the white area there?
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
For the utilities for this project, they are proposing wells and septic, which is allowed under our ordinance code based on the way that they've set their subdivision map up. They will be required to submit final proof of groundwater prior to their final map, which is standard per our ordinance code. If the project were ever to annex into the Groveland Community Services District, a separate environmental review would need to be done at that time. That is not a part of the project at this time. The access to the project site will be from Ferretti Road, and they'll be using shared driveways to minimize the number of encroachments on the Ferretti Road. They'll also have a taxiway connection to Pine Mountain Lake Airport. This project went to the Airport Land Use Commission, and they made a determination of conformance with the Airport Land Use Plan. It was, this project also was reviewed by the airports manager, and the airports manager provided a number of conditions that will become a part of the set of conditions for the tentative subdivision map.
Question, so all nine lots would have taxiway access?
The first eight, and the last, the furthest ninth lot would not. The project was evaluated under the California Environmental Quality Act. We prepared an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration. Some of the issues that were highlighted in that initial study were biological resources, land use and planning, hydrology, utilities, and cultural resources. And it was determined that with the implementation of mitigation measures, that the project would not have a significant impact on the environment. The project went through a 30-day public review with that initial study, and we received two letters from property owners, both in opposition to the project. And I did hand out one additional letter that was received after that 30-day comment period. I have copies up here if any one in the audience would like a copy of it. Otherwise, you all have a copy of it. Lots of findings to be made.
Yes, quite a few, more than the last one.
More than the last one. They are in your agenda packet and as well as at the back if anyone needs them. Mostly, we're just analyzing whether or not the, if there's environmental impacts, if they've been mitigated, and if the project's consistent with the proposed land use designations as well as the general plan.
Okay. Think.
Oh, I'm not done.
You're still going.
I'm done.
I don't want to cut you off.
Don't you dare.
The Warrior game started 20 minutes ago.
All right, I'll run. I'll go fast.
It's recording, Mike.
Same thing for the zone change, looking to make sure the project's consistent with the zoning ordinance as well as the environmental review that was done, as well as findings for the tentative subdivision map, including a finding that it's consistent with the subdivision map act. And for your decision process tonight, you are the recommending body on the three entitlement requests before you. You can recommend the approval of the project with the conditions, recommend approval with modifications, you can recommend denial, or send the project back to staff if you'd like. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for staff?
I'd like to make a disclosure.
Sure.
I, I keep an airplane at that airport. I have no financial interest in this or any other property on the airport, which, and I know a number of these fellows out there.
So do I.
As does Mike.
Okay. Any other disclosures, questions, anything? Okay. With that, open the public hearing, and same as the previous two, we'll start with those in favor, then opposed, anyone neutral, rebuttal, and sir rebuttal.
Let's see how many.
How many folks plan to speak? I think we're going to try to limit it to three minutes then, if we may. Do you have the thing hooked up? Okay, the, the red, green, and yellow cards. Okay. So we're going to limit it to three minutes per speaker, just in the interest of everyone getting an opportunity to speak. So with that, as soon as Quincy is ready.
Three minutes are up.
I guess I have one question.
Yeah.
For the taxiway that is adjacent or allows access, is that any part of, I don't remember seeing it in our packet, is that actually something that we have to approve, or is that going to come back before the commission? How does that work?
So the taxiway is a part of the project. The applicants will dedicate an easement on the map for that taxiway. So it is a part of the subdivision request. And as I mentioned, they've been working really closely with the airports manager to ensure that any construction issues or access issues and things like that will be addressed, as well as it's in compliance with any FAA regulations and things of that nature. So they, they will be dedicated on the, on the, on the map through the tentative map process.
And there are already multitudes of lots up there that have this access. This is not new. It just adds more.
Okay. So I'll just wave my hand to you when.
Okay, good enough. So we'll start with those in favor. Anyone like to be first?
Can we go together? Are you a couple? No. No, one at a time.
When do we do it, one at a time? That was, that was a rather novel request.
That's my record show.
So hello, commissioners. My name is Rex Pemberton, and I own 50% of the LLC Mid Valley Aviation with my partner, Jason Johansson. We're not a couple, but we are business partners. I live up on the airport at Pine Mountain Lake. I have, I've lived on the airport for eight years, and I've been in Groveland and Pine Mountain Lake for 10 years. And just want to say I absolutely love it. I love the community up there. And Jason and I, both being pilots, we saw this opportunity come up, and we thought, what a great way to promote economic development in the area and to bring more pilots to what we love, Pine Mountain Lake Airport. And so we looked at the current zoning around the airport, and it all is RE 1 AIR, and looked at the zoning around the Long Gulch Ranch, the property that we bought, and, and think it falls consistently in relation to the property around the, around the airport. So would appreciate you reviewing this, and thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Jason Johansson, Rex's partner.
The other 50%.
You've got it. I'm just going to echo what Rex said. It's just, we, we both live right on the airport and really love it. I know some of you are very familiar with the airport, but, you know, we saw this as an opportunity both for us and to provide other pilots a place to live on an airport. It's always been my dream. I've been at Pine Mountain Lake Airport for about five years, and we love it. These lots seem, seem really neat and would provide more people to do kind of what we're doing. And I think that was a pretty neat opportunity. That's it.
Before the, before the second partner sits down, how do you plan on accessing your taxiway to the ramp? Where were you coming up at?
So right next to the county hangars, there's a 60, about a 65-foot wide piece. And this has all been approved through Benny, the airport manager.
Mm-hmm.
So we have a taxiway with an easement, and we've got an advisory circular from the FAA to follow of how that's going to turn and the grades it can go.
Okay.
And, you know, that's, that's all been addressed.
So you'll go around the backside of Windsock Hill there, then?
That's correct. Right, right by the old, where the old restaurant used to be.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Right where Lance Parks always tracks.
Local knowledge here.
Commissioners, my name is Glenn Caldwell again, representing the Business Council. And I have additional interest in this project, although I have never met the developers before tonight. Okay, I am also a private pilot. And.
You want to buy a lot? I think. Get in early.
Again, Dave and his staff has done an excellent job in mitigating all the objections here. Some projects just really make sense, okay? The density around the airport is, is already there. This project is just going to integrate that same density. And these kinds of projects throughout our country are very special projects where people who are general aviation enthusiasts can have a home in a hangar and access to an airport. And they're special enough that they're, you know, we spend a lot of time in our community talking about, let's get low-income housing. Obviously, this is not, okay? So these kinds of projects provide a lot of, relatively a lot of revenue to the county for the density and for the, for each lot. There's going to be some $50,000 in, in just permit fees, okay, to start, and we could use that. Now, on a recurring basis, the, the property taxes on the, the type of properties and the, and the buildings that will be built on, on these kinds of lots is significant. So if we're going to build something, if we're going to increase the density, if we're going to give people a place to build really nice homes with access to airport, this just makes great sense, this project. So we would recommend that you approve the project and the, and the zone change and the, the whole package.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone else in favor?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Michael Tobin. I'm a resident at Pine Mountain Lake with my wife, Jules. I'm a neighbor to both Rex and Jason, and to the two distinguished men out here. I would tell you that there are fewer pilots every year in the United States. Today, less than 500,000 active pilots in the United States. The number of airports goes down monthly in the United States. So to think about two people, the kind of courage and passion it takes to take on this project and accomplishment, it's remarkable, absolutely remarkable. So I really stand behind them for what they're doing. I love the comments I just heard from the gentleman who's a developer himself. I can tell you the character of these individuals and their families. I live next to them, and I have for almost a decade in the case of Rex. I would really encourage you to vote in favor of this. You just don't find this kind of opportunity very often. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor?
My name is Brian Fitzgerald, and I'm the general partner of Long Gulch Ranch, and my property surrounds these folks. And I've known Rex and Jason only for about six months, but I've seen, you know, some of the things that you guys have up on your general plan stewardess, stewardship, and again, economic development. I think we've been working with the county for many, many years on developing Long Gulch Ranch. Now, part of the ranch was sold three years ago for, to Motherland Land Trust, so 60% of that, my property, is protected against development. But doing small developments like this, and some of the developments I'm going to do in the future, we need to have that balance for economic development and the stewardess. So I support this project 100%, and please approve it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Ron Kopf, on behalf of Brian Fitzgerald and also the business. And, you know, when we were working with, with Long Gulch and then looking for some people to try and take on this niche project of which there's a real need for in the marketplace up there, and it provides a real opportunity for people to tie into the airport, we were very glad to, to run into Rex and Jason because of their enthusiasm, their ability, the fact that they live up in Groveland, they want to do it right, they're going to be looking to bring more neighbors up into that area. And these type of projects, just as it was pointed out, just don't come along very often, and you don't have opportunities and locations to be able to do these type of projects. So we think it's a great addition to the Groveland area.
Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for serving as your next step before you become supervisors. One, one point that I just wanted to emphasize is I spent a lot of time on the airport meeting a lot of people that fly in for various reasons. And many of these people are looking for this type of a situation. I'm, I'm 100% convinced that it will be a very successful. And the people come in and most impressed with the two gentlemen. I didn't know their relationship completely until tonight, but I have all, all the respect and confidence in the world that it's going to be done right, and would certainly ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
My name is Janet Gregory. I'm a 12-year resident at Pine Mountain Lake with my husband. We're on the airport, and we're neighbors with both Rex and Jason. And the point I want to make in favor of this project is it helps really support a valuable asset for Tuolumne County, which is the airport itself. In the years that we've been up there, we see the airport regularly accessed by CAL FIRE in support of wildlife, wildfire suppression. PHI cares and other air ambulance service also takes care of much of the surrounding area. We've seen police helicopters up there doing search and rescue, and also the Department of Agriculture and Wildlife. And I believe that the Tuolumne County airports, there's only two in the entire county, are an incredible valuable asset that are underappreciated, and that a project like this, although it is residential, does help to continue to support this amazing asset to our neighborhood. So is my comments.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Okay, then we'll ask those opposed. If anyone is opposed, like to come up, you're welcome to do so.
Both me and my husband are pilots, and we've been up in that area for about 24 years, but I still have some objections to the project, mainly on fire-related issues. This, one of the things is the site is within 300. This, um, one of this thing is the site is within 300 feet to the west of water and sewer from, per GCSD and should be serviced by them. They currently propose fire would be from CAL FIRE off of Merrill, which would be about 20 or more minutes away. So sprinklers would need to be, uh, would should be part of the, the thing to decrease on the response time. Because if they came from during a fire times, you have, Merrill would have to come through the downtown area and it's very impacted and then come all the way out for Eddie. So it would probably be 20 minutes or more before fire would be able to arrive on the site. So this site should be put on sprinklers so that they would be calming down fires before because that, that airport, as she was stating, is a very critical fire defense area. Um, we live back on the far side behind the airport and so part of our egress is coming out that way toward this development. And it should be, you know, we really need to make a, a real effort to make sure that this is a real fire safe being that this is a real high fire area. Um, so I think that we need to make sure that this, this project is connected to sprinklers, connected to water so, so that the, um, the sprinklers could be energized during a fire event is if they lose their well, they would lose their sprinkler abilities. Um, and that, that, the egress in a fire event from, um, in the fire, uh, could possibly be jeopardized by coming out that direction if we've got a big fire going on in that location. Um, it's also adjacent to the water storage facility, which is right behind the facility up here, which services the whole area behind it. So if we lose that fire, um, the water storage and the pressure tank, it would jeopardize that whole area where we were on, um, fire hydrants. Also is what, um, I'm not sure who, who's gonna be serving, if they're gonna be included in part of the ambulance district, because that would be the, the main, main services for them also. But this area is all, already zoned five acres and so it seems more appropriate for the site to not, to have, based on the water. Um, this, they're talking about fractured water, um, ones which don't usually hold a whole lot of water. And if they're not, they, they state that they're not connected to the, to the groundwater. So there's probably gonna be a real problem getting enough water to the site. And again, if we can't have water for the sprinklers, we have a possible, uh, real problem for fires in that area. And once it gets into that area, if it can't be shut down right away, we're gonna have, because that's what they told us years ago when we had the, the rim fire. The fire department that was out on that site said that they were really making an effort to keep it from getting in because once it gets into the houses, they said it would just sweep through that whole development. So I'm really concerned about fires, but not having it on sprinklers, not having it connected where we have pressurized system. Um, and they are within, within 300 feet.
You have hit the three-minute time, so...
Okay, that's...
Thank you for your time.
I'm, I'm actually with her, but I just wanted to kind of reiterate. I was in building inspection for over 20 years. Uh, I've seen what fires do. I've inspected a lot of them. To not be on water and sewer is, is not a good idea in this situation. There is water and sewer available, per GCSD. Uh, I believe the, the plan said that it was not within 300 feet to the east, but the, the manhole cover I saw was to the west. It was right on Elderberry and Freddy. So, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but that's, that's where I believe their access could be. So, um, also not being part of the ambulance service is not a great idea and not being part of the GCSD fire, you know, service is not a great idea because Merrill Road is quite a bit further. We went through the rim fire, you know, we've been up there since 94. We went through the rim fire and that would really, if you couldn't get out Freddy Road, you know, to the east. And right now, every time I drive out Freddy Road, I have to make a detour through Tannahill because there's a big gap in Freddy Road there. So the idea of, of exiting is my biggest concern. I'm not against the project as having more taxiway houses. I'm against the conditions under which it's being proposed. You know, I feel we do need more safety measures in place. And using wells has, you know, a lot of people shut their wells off when they leave. You know, they don't, they don't, so your fire sprinklers are not gonna be pressurized. And the building code does require fire sprinklers for all new construction. It has for several years now. So that's, just kind of reiterating some of what she said, but that's my biggest concerns is the safety issues, the exiting issues, you know, the egress and ingress in case of a fire event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else, anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, anyone wish to speak neutrally? None there either. Any of the proponents wish to rebut anything that you heard from the opponents?
Gently and with all due respect to the opponents, um, their objections, all, all are being dealt with in California code. The, the fire flow and the, uh, the fire sprinklers that have to be built in these houses, these things are all taken into consideration and with David's team, uh, already have, have evaluated these things, uh, that I think every one of their objections are already mitigated in your package somewhere. Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else?
So, uh, yeah, appreciate all the comments and, um, basically, uh, we wouldn't really be here if we hadn't looked at fire flow requirements in the rim fire as well. Um, and so that was one of the things we really looked at. Um, reasonable proof of groundwater will be completed before the final map is approved. So we have to prove there's gonna be enough water to service these lots in the first place. Uh, meeting code and fire flow requirements via well, uh, is, is a challenge, but it can be done with holding tanks and boosted pumps. And that's a commonplace, uh, in California rural areas. 300-foot rule as well, there, you'll see a shaded area on the map that, uh, is a no-build zone for any building with plumbing and that's the risk. Uh, and, uh, we've definitely taken them into account. Uh, and you'll see that in the conditions of approval.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in rebuttal? Uh, okay, the, the opponents have the opportunity for sir rebuttal and rebuttal brought up? No? Okay. Case will close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission. Anyone have any questions for staff? Jerry?
The, um, discussion on the, uh, fire department service, I, I live a little, I have, whenever I have any kind of issue, I'm always served by the downtown Groveland people. Are you aware of any concerns about the people in Groveland saying they would not go to the, uh, the airport?
So we did talk with GCSD about this issue and my understanding is that even though the, technically the responding station is off of Merrill Road, that they often send the closest ambulance and that is in downtown, um, Groveland. And so it is possible that this site could be served by the ambulance in downtown Groveland. If that ambulance is not available or those, that, that station is not available to respond, they'll, the services will come from Merrill. Um, and that is common for all of Groveland, uh, as you said, up the hill and a lot of our projects that are further, um, towards Yosemite National Park.
Yeah, a couple of fine points. First off, there is nothing but CAL FIRE.
Right.
GCSD uses CAL FIRE for both of their off, their, uh, their things. And, and secondly, and the, uh, I've called the ambulance for our camp there half a dozen times and it's always serviced out of Groveland. There, they do consider that part of their area, whether it's technically they consider that part of their area practically, it, it is well-covered.
Mr. Plan?
The other question I have is on, uh, on fire flow requirements. Uh, residential, what are the fire flow requirements for residential?
Now you're testing me, Jerry. I, it's 500, isn't it?
There must be somebody from the planning department.
Yeah, yeah, now you're testing me.
He's the building guy.
Thank you for asking. My name is David Gonzalez. I'm your Community Resource Agency Director. So is the question on fire flow for the, um, fire flow or the actual residential type of sprinklers?
Like, you know, for example, in, in the facility I'm, I'm familiar with, we needed 750 gallons per minute available.
That's the minimum for a real residential area, which is what you're referring to. That's accurate. That's actually out of NFPA fire codes or the California fire codes.
So that, and, and that was a two-hour requirement.
That's correct. You have a fire flow duration as well as a standard for that as well. And those are met by the pumps and the, uh, storage tanks that, uh, the applicant was referring to as well.
And that's required for residential as well as for these particular lots.
These types of homes, um, the new building codes require sprinklers and there's a duration and it's fire flow per square foot for those minimum fire flows on those. And the flows that there are discussion about the pumps that they'll have to put in and the storage tanks will cover those types of things. And that's a requirement in the building codes as mentioned. Answer your question?
Yep.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Plan wanted to go and say then?
Uh, I, uh, I'm a little confused over the ambulance situation and the, uh, fire, uh, response situation. Um, reading through law of the comments and so on, it appears that, uh, the service district, uh, kinda oversees that. Uh, and there was, in fact, there was a vote yesterday regarding that fee for the ambulance. I don't know whether it passed or not, but, well, that's maybe not so important, but I'm concerned because people are paying this fee or have been at least for the ambulance and, and fire protection, I assume. Uh, uh, and it appears this proposal being outside the district, there's no way to collect the fee short of an annexation, I, I assume, which I don't know how many decades that might take, but the, I can imagine it being very slow. So what is staff's response to my question about, it just seems common sense that people should have some skin in the game and, uh, in some way be financially involved in what the, in the services they get.
If the, um, if the ambulance comes from GCSD to anyone who is not in the GCSD district, then, uh, it is being cert, they are serving people who don't pay into GCSD. You are correct. And this would be one of those parcels.
Does GCSD bill for that service then?
This is a, a larger question of, um, county fire services between some of our special, our special ambulance districts and fire districts and things like that that we have. And really, um, through this project, there's not a mechanism to create a, um, impact fee for these few lots that would, I think, address what, um, Mr. Plan is referring to. This was a conversation we did have with GCSD, uh, regarding this project and many others that we have up and down the Highway 120 corridor. A lot of our camps and other projects that are not within GCSD boundaries but are served by them.
Well, there may be a lot of them, but in my mind, it doesn't make it right.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're getting a service, you ought to be involved, it seems to me, but, uh, I don't, I, but I, I don't think we can require it.
Right. That's where I was gonna go is that we don't have that.
But I mean, you know, the, the right thing here seems to me to have those folks buy into that.
That's not unlike someone who is driving down Highway 120 heading for Yosemite runs off the side of the road. They, uh, they are also getting that service, but they didn't pay into it. We don't say, hey, you're not part of GCSD.
Well, no, but we got nine homes here anchored to the ground and that's a little different, I think. But anyway.
Mr. Gonzalez?
David Gonzalez, I'm your Community Resource Agency Director again. So, um, as Quincy mentioned before, this is part of a larger issue that is being studied currently right now with a, a fire study that's, uh, the, um, County Administrator Office is going through and it's countywide. We, we have this issue countywide with districts, mutual aid, automatic aid and, uh, interdepartmental agreements that are already held. The ambulance is a little special, um, because Groveland area is paid for an augmented type of service and the taxes that were being imposed upon you, I'm not an expert in this, I'll just tell you my understanding of it. That was meant to continue a level of service that those areas residents have asked for increased level of response. And there's a reason why that ambulance is actually stationed there and that's that tax to support that service.
That's what I remember.
There's also units that come and are supported with that from the other, um, county services that are automatically covered in the other part of your services and taxes. So in fire is, in response to the fire issues, those individual districts have those mutual agreements. As Quincy mentioned before, this is not the only type of project that we have challenges with this on. Um, the proximity with this one is a little bit of an issue, um, from the perspective, and I understand that, but it is no different to us than the upper, the upper corridor or the lower corridor that are just adjacent to this. So, um, I can't answer or solve your problems that you're raffling with, but I just wanted to give you some information and insight, um, that there is some reports that are coming out from the CAO's office and a fire study, um, that will shed some light on some things about those. Um, I'm not sure in specifics how this area is dealt with though, so I hope I didn't do anything other than help you and set a confusion, but there's some information for you.
Well, as, as I understand it, and again, it's not germane to whether this is appropriate to vote or not vote on this, the CAL FIRE handles all of that. And that fee that we all pay, these nine places, nine spots, will have to pay the same fee because it's a rural, rural counties kind of fee that we, we're charged. So they'll just fall under that like, like, uh, if it was inside Pine Mountain Lake or something, they would fall inside it. Uh, they don't have to be inside GCSD in order to be hit with that fee.
The, the specifics on that, uh, that ambulance tax that was just voted on and I don't know whether it passed either, but, uh, I'm assuming it did, was that there are, and I'm, I'm pretty sure the number's correct, there's like five ambulances that service the county. However, because Groveland is so, and they, and they swap around, but because Groveland is so remote, they said, okay, we're gonna pick up the tab for making sure one stays on top of the hill.
On the hill all the time.
And so the $70 is to guarantee that one stays up on top of the hill because you got the ambulance at the bottom of the hill and you need it on top, you got a big problem. So that's, that's what the $70 is about, is to have a specific, uh, connection to that one.
Okay, anyone else?
I wanna make a, a comment on this.
Please.
I suspect we're probably going in the same direction anyway, but when we talked about the, uh, the financial impact of some of these things, one thing that people don't realize is that probably for most of these homes, the, uh, the property taxes on their airplane will be very close to the property taxes on their home. So when you look at a piece of property like this and you look at the house, you know, there's gonna be some houses that have million-dollar airplanes in front of them. And, and that gets taxed at a, at a prodigious rate. Uh, the, uh, so it is, uh, it is important to know there's quite a bit of revenue to be gained by getting airplanes that fly in and out of Pine Mountain Lake to, to report the county as their home because we end up making a lot of money out of that.
Wouldn't have thought of it.
Anyone else?
Totally different topic is to asking for some of that money to come back to help maintain the airport, but that's a whole different bucket of work.
Yeah, that is.
That's not on the agenda this evening, Mike.
Could, could we put it on the agenda?
Anyone else have a comment? And more questions for staff? Then I would entertain a motion.
I'd be glad to do the motion.
Go for it.
Mr. Chairman, um, I move that we approve the, uh, mitigated neck, uh, declaration prepared for the project based on findings A through F. Um, that we also approve general plan amendment GPA 17 dash 008 based on findings A through...
C.
C?
C, yes.
And that we approve the zone change, RZ 17 dash 009 based on findings A through C and the tentative subdivision map, TSM 17 dash 002 based on findings, um, A through D and subject to conditions 1 through 104.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.